Okay.
Um, all right. So we'll call to order at seven oh three. Uh, there's so many people on right now. It's going to be a little bit tough for me to go around the room for just the planning commission folks, but I'm going to give it a try here because I think if I call people individually, it's a little easier for Hank to record. So uh, if you just um, when I say your name, uh, let us know you're here and let us know where you are. Blake.
Blake Moore, present. I'm calling from Huntington Woods.
You, Chris.
Chris Kombiaski, I'm calling in from Huntington Woods.
Thanks, Chris Gale.
I'm calling in from Huntington Woods.
Thank you, Rick.
Rick Poland in Huntington Woods.
Hank, help me out. I don't see anybody else.
You would be the last person.
Oh, okay. I thought. All right. Uh, and I am.
We don't have our sixth person yet.
Okay.
You only need to side.
Perfect. Uh, I'm calling from Huntington Woods as well. Uh, we have an approval for the most recent agenda.
Mr. Chair, if I might make a suggestion here to help clear out some of the room for you, if we could go ahead and perhaps ask and move the solar portion of this public hearing on the solar item up front, it might help uh, clear some of the room out at a later time, once we start ours.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Do we need a motion to change the?
We'll need a motion in a second to amend the agenda in a vote place.
Okay. Um, well, let's approve the uh, uh, try to approve the agenda with an amended order. Uh, so we'd be looking for a motion to move item nine to number five, if that's agreeable.
I shall move.
Thanks, Gale.
A second. A second.
Thanks, Chris. Uh, Blake.
My second, I.
Sorry, I thought Chris seconded. Sorry, Chris.
Hi.
And Rick.
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Um, so Hank will move uh, move the solar discussion to the first item on the agenda, number five.
Absolutely.
And looking for approval of the minutes on April twenty six.
I have one correct. I have one correction. On page two of the minutes, third line down, the sentence starts with dark horizontal lines. It should be dark horizontal lines bring massing down, not nassing.
Thank you. I'll have those corrected.
Thank you. And with that correction, I'll move to approve them.
Thanks, Gale. We have a second.
Second.
Chris, thank you. Blake.
Hi.
Rick.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
Hi, hi. Thank you. All right. So we'll open it up for the matter of public hearing for the solar ordinance. Um, I think last week talked about it. We had asked for um, the IP data, uh, which it looks like that came through. Hank, did that look okay?
Um, yeah, there were some discrepancies, but I mean, I don't believe that there's anything that would have changed the outcome of the survey at all.
Okay. So I guess for anybody here, I see Aaron is on. Um, I assume that he is representing the environmental uh, committee today. If that's not the case, let me know, Aaron.
Uh, I am, I am a representative of, I think Ben's here. He's our chair, but um, I'd be happy to speak on behalf of.
So I think um, it really, we would, we would sort of leave it up to you guys to decide if you wanted us to vote tonight because we have such a small group uh, of only five, or if you want to push the vote until uh, the next meeting when there's more members of planning commission here.
What I'm, what I might suggest, Mr. Chair, uh, if it's all right with you, what you might want to do is you might want to take input and public comment tonight, and then uh, at least have that portion uh, handled. And then it can come up for a vote at the following meeting if they want to know. I did, just for people's edification, planning commission normally has nine members. We have five here tonight, which would mean that we have a uh, which would mean that we have um, only all of, everybody would have to vote in favor for an order for it to be moved on. The function of the public hearing would be not to approve it, but would be to approve the recommendation of it to the city commission for adoption. And that's where this was done. So if uh, I see Aaron, you have your hand up. Were you ready to go or?
Oh, I was um, can I speak? Is that, I don't want to uh, jump ahead the line. Um.
No, that's up to Michael. Michael's uh.
No, no, that's fine. I, Hank, I didn't realize that we could take public comment and and uh, but not vote. So if we can, if we can do that, and then if.
You can tape, they can, they would request a table before the net, before the vote took place, but you have public all here. You might as well take the public comment.
Okay. Well, Aaron, you want to go ahead first before I kind of open it up for public participation?
Sure. Uh, and if any of the ESC is here as well to hopefully to back up, I'm going to say, I guess um, first to uh, Hank's point, um, I'd like to, I would hope that, you know, if the public comments are, you know, pretty in favor, I hope that we can move this along. Uh, you know, the first survey found over ninety percent in favor. This survey found seventy six in favor. Uh, so it seems to be broad support. Um, I think we have the solar panel expert here as well. I don't know if, I don't know if Mark's here or not, uh, who will be able to provide um, kind of more expertise on the matter, but obviously um, the ESC has talked about this a lot, and we would support moving this forward um, kind of in a in efficient manner.
Okay. Well, I guess with that said, we'll, we'll go ahead and open it up for public participation. And before we decide to move to a vote, we'll get your go ahead, uh, whether you want to do that tonight or, or uh, push it. Sounds good? Okay, great. Uh, that said, I guess we'll move it, open it for public participation, and it looks like uh, Jay Schwartz has his hand up. Uh, when you open your mic to speak, if you could just state your name and address for the record, and let us know your thoughts. We'll start with Jay.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jay Schwartz. I live at one zero zero one four Ludlow since nineteen sixty five. By way of background, I am a degreed electrical engineer uh, with over thirty-five years of engineering experience directly in engineering and technical experience going back to nineteen seventy-four. Uh, I rise in general favor of allowing solar cells on the roof, uh, and, but I do have one serious concern. Uh, and uh, after Mr. Ritesh's comments, uh, raised a second uh, concern. Uh, the first uh, thing in favor of is that due to uh, the position of several houses, allowing solar cells on the front and the back would uh, enable them to uh, provide maximum benefit to the house, whereas because of uh, especially houses that are north, with the roof is north, south, uh, north facing roof, in my particular case, would not be exposed to direct sunlight. So it wouldn't, it would degrade the performance of these solar cells. In addition, you have trees and shading of other uh, houses and the shadow of other houses and uh, general construction. So allowing them on all sides of the roof is a positive thing. And so I rise in general favor of the uh, proposed ordinance in general. I have uh, a concern about the uh, this survey that was taken, and we've heard several cases around of surveys being taken in the community. Uh, I would like to see, as uh, put into the public record, a detailed uh, uh, written report of the processes and procedures on how the data was collected and how it was analyzed. Uh, this would be very, very important. And I would ask that prior to this ordinance, to this board, uh, passing that ordinance, there is a prerequisite that this report be entered into the public record. Uh, not just somebody say, we did it, but I would like to know how they did it and what the results were. Uh, the purpose of that being to determine that it really does truly represent uh, is, is a representative sample uh, gathered in a valid way and not just a matter of uh, you know, of, of, and not just random noise. Okay. Having said that, now, the one concern that I have, a technical concern is that in the proposed ordinance, there was mentioned about batteries. And in, and also uh, what I am concerned about is the potential for solar cells or batteries to be connected or to come in contact even inadvertently or uh, with the commercial power grid, DTE Energy. And that this ordinance should explicitly, inexplicably uh, make provisions that such a connection, whether an undesired or unanticipated connection between the solar cells or the batteries associated and the commercial power grid cannot happen. That it is physically impossible. Now, having said that, there is specific technology out there, proven, valid, very safe technology, which enables people who have solar cells to sell commercial, their excess power to the power company. If that's the case, no problem, fine. What I am concerned about is where somebody tries to do it yourself, or someone didn't quite know what they were doing, um, or in an unimproved manner, causes this connection. And it doesn't matter whether the connection is a manual connection or an automatic connection, but somehow energy is going to flow from the solar cells to the commercial grid. This is a particularly dangerous situation where the solar cells might be active, but you have a power fail on the grid, and line workers on the grid are expecting a dead wire. And then all of a sudden, here comes energy down that line from an unanticipated source. Now, if the appropriate building fire and safety codes already take this into account, great, but I have no factual knowledge one way or the other, if this is true, and that is why I'm raising the concern here. Therefore, I would ask that before forwarding on to the rest of the commission for approval, that this ordinance be modified in such a way as to explicitly, not by reference to another document, but explicitly in the ordinance, take into account the situation to prevent uh, unanticipated or undesired feeding of energy from solar or battery cells into the commercial power grid. If it's approved, if it's inspected, if it's done right, if it's designed correctly, no problem. It is the unanticipated case I am seeking to avoid. And that summarizes my comments. I prove the, in general, the concept. I would ask the processes and procedures uh, be put in written form and put into the public record. And the amendment be, the ordinance be amended to take into account the safety situation I have just enumerated. Thank you.
Thanks, Jay. Appreciate it. Uh, it looks like Tony is up next. Oh, you're on mute, Tony. You just put your uh, Tony, you're on mute.
You have to unmute. You have to unmute, Tony.
Yep, yep.
Tony.
I've got uh, I've got Mayor Bob Paul who just stepped into the house here. So if someone else has their hand raised, uh, go to it. Uh, I'll be right back. Once I get done with uh, Mayor Bob Paul, one moment. Is that okay, Hank? And is there someone else there that has her?
Mike would be, Mike would be our chair, so.
It's all, yeah, you're outside. We'll see if there's anybody else in the public wishes.
Okay.
Uh, anybody else from the public wishing to comment on this topic?
Oh, okay. So it's me. Well, I guess it is me. All right.
Sorry, Tony. If you just state your name and address, please.
Yes, it's Richard Tony Lehman, one three three zero three Nadine Huntington Woods. Uh, longtime resident, probably fifty years or so, if you add all my time up, maybe six, sixty-three, sixty-five years or so. Uh, my worry, yeah, uh, simply is that I don't want to miss the aesthetics of this. A few drives by, and I've taken the time to drive through Oak Park, Warren, Hazel Park, and a few other cities, uh, and have noticed that these big devices seem to take away from what is the aesthetic of the neighborhood and take away from the, the aesthetic of the individual home. Uh, we've got beautiful homes in this town. Uh, and although I think it's very, very important to deal with moving forward on energy matters, uh, very, very important. Uh, I must say that uh, the determination to do this without enough items there that would cause one to make it small enough so it wouldn't be obtrusive on the front of the house. And if you do that, of course, and you wind up having it sized, or it's not going to function as it needs to function. Now, in this day and age, of course, they have shingling, as you know, uh, that looks like shingles but acts as solar panels. Now, that I think is acceptable. Uh, but once the cat is out of the bag here, I think we run the risk of having these things all over the place. Uh, I know that I certainly would not like to look out my window and see a home across the street where the beautiful front door is not what you see. All you see is this ugly, obtrusive, large solar panel. The business about having these on the back of the home where it's possible to do so and gather enough light or, oh, bye-bye, mayor. See you. Uh, or um, or on a garage, I think is a very logical solution. But I would urge the commission, uh, urge the uh, uh, the city to take a step back from this and take a look at the examples issued by other communities and see what it really means to the neighborhood. I understand the electrical part. I understand everyone wants to garner the sun, uh, lower their bill. We want to appear as if we're doing the right thing, but sometimes that knee-jerk reaction, not saying this is a knee-jerk reaction, but the idea of doing this may be more problematic than the assistance it's going to do for our community. So the cost benefit, and I say the cost in terms of people driving down the street willing to buy one of your homes would stop themselves from doing so, or that the, that, that there would be a negative benefit uh, in having something across the street or on their home themselves that is ugly and something that would have to be taken down, let alone the long-term maintenance issues. Uh, we typically, as a city, aren't out there knocking on everyone's door about seeing to it that these things or a lot of items like that are maintained. Uh, a good example would be uh, satellite dishes on the front of homes. They are all over in a number of our neighboring cities, and they are rather ugly on the front of the home. And this again is another example of something that is a great benefit, but I'm not sure it's a benefit to the neighborhood.
Okay. Thanks, Tony. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Uh, any other member of the public that's on that would like to speak? Uh, Mark, sorry, I'm kind of scrolling through a few screens here, guys. Uh, if you, if, if you have the ability, if you could put your little like raise your hand icon up, that would definitely help. But uh, next person I saw is Mark Rosenblatt. So go ahead.
Uh, hey there, Mark Rosenblatt, eight nine two zero Nadine. Um, so I just want to kind of give the other side of the uh, the table from what Tony was just saying. There's a lot of things that are ugly about people's houses, and that's pretty subjective. I think the green shingled roof is really ugly, but there's no rule that you can't do it, as is a red shingled roof. I think a purple door is ugly, but you're allowed to do that too. So in the name of progress, which I thought that our city is a progressive city, a city that is all about recycling and, you know, keeping things moving forward, I would think that, that solar is an important part of what we join up with moving forward. Why do we want to be a late adopter? We're already late, but why do we want to be a late adopter? There's, there's a lot of things that were put on houses years ago that everybody thought was not attractive, and yet years later, everybody has them. A gas meter, it's in the front of the house, for the most part. They're kind of ugly. Are they smaller than panels? Yeah, they are. But they're necessary. This is something that is going to be necessary soon enough. And why should we mandate that it's not just because some people don't like the looks of it? It, it, it doesn't make any sense. Sometimes progress comes with a price, and the progress, in my opinion, is way more important than the look, especially since we are not mandating all things. Who's to decide what's good-looking and what's not good-looking? Thanks.
Thanks, Mark. Uh, anyone else J I C or hands up? We'll come back to you. Uh, if there's nobody else, I just want to make sure everybody gets a chance here.
Yep. Me too, Tony. I'd like another comment when you have a chance.
Sure. Uh, okay. Looks like, uh, yeah, we'll go to Jay quickly and then uh, Tony.
Hi there. Thank you for recognizing me again. Uh, by way of background and experience, uh, I am familiar with a similar situation uh, regarding exterior structures. In specific, I've been a licensed amateur radio operator since nineteen seventy-four ham radio. And one of the things we have and have fought continuously over the decades is when people say, well, you put up a ham radio antenna, and it doesn't matter whether it's a seventy-five foot tower or a piece of wire, it's invisible from the street, uh, lying on your roof or uh, or uh, something in the backyard. It doesn't matter uh, that a, a piece of wire that you can't see. It's, it's almost invisible to the naked eye from your neighbor's property. It doesn't matter that people have raised great alarm that, oh my God, it's going to lower the value of my house. I can't sell my house. Uh, it's not going to be desirable. Uh, people uh, have raised all kinds of objections. Over the decades of, over entire country, uh, there has been zero, zero valid data to show that this is a problem, that people have refused to buy a house because ham radio is there or uh, and, and antenna is present, or that it degraded the value of the property or the neighbor's property. That relates to the current case because, given the prevalence of solar cells in the country, there is far more prevalent, prevalent than amateur radio antennas, I would challenge anyone who says it's going to lower my property value or that somebody is not going to buy the property or something, or arguments to that effect. There must be uh, among the real estate community other provable incidents, provable documentation, provable studies that would validate this point uh, that having these on where they can be seen by your neighbor or across street is going to somehow damage the community. Uh, that there would be by now some sort of uh, either in the real estate industry or some other uh, uh, study to validate the point that it either does or does not have a negative effect upon the community or upon individual values. So that is why I related uh, these, my story about amateur radio towers and to relate that to the current situation. Uh, if there's data, let's have it. And then we can make an informed decision about what the situation regarding property values is or is not. Thank you.
Thanks, Jay. Uh, Tony, one more thing?
Yes, thank you so much, though, uh, for the time as well. Uh, although I agree, Mark, with everything you said, uh, certainly very, very uh, interesting, logical. Uh, I agree with the business of moving forward. And then if the four, if the city is going to be forward-thinking, we need to act like we think. Uh, I absolutely understand that. And I'm not sure that you can't kill two birds with one stone, to be perfectly honest with you. I don't think that the suggestion is here necessarily, not my suggestion, that they're eliminated in their entirety. I do believe, though, it's possible there are in numerous examples of grounded installations of these that can be done in a backyard setting along a fence line. For example, uh, if there are trees in the way, there's going to be trees in the way either way, whether it's going to be on the roof in the front where it's visible uh, or in the backyard or, or on a garage, for example, somewhere where these are not going to be necessarily as uh, uh, seen. Uh, they tend to be large, unlike an antenna, as Jay mentioned, which I certainly do agree with him uh, as well. But these are much more massive, and they seem to and could potentially without some management overtake the front of the house and be a source of some irritation. I'm not saying everyone would be irritated. I'm not saying that every one of these installations is no good. But why can't we kill two birds with one stone here? Uh, as I, and I'll leave you with this last thought. Please take a moment. If you have a moment in your day, I know you're all busy. Drive through some of these communities that have for a number of years, perhaps ten years or so, allowed these things to uh, be placed uh, in the front of homes. Uh, you, you might be taken aback. Uh, at, at least I was. And I'm very positive about moving forward. Uh, for example, I was on the board of Semrio Southeast Michigan Regional Energy Office, still am, yeah, working on energy matters uh, in Michigan. And so, yes, I think we can do both, but I think we have to be very careful. And the business about accruing this to, for example, a tower, which is yes, it's obtrusive, but I think Jay is uh, uh, right. I mean, it's a lot smaller. Generally, it doesn't present itself that, like that. So uh, thank you all for uh, your time and your energy.
Thanks, Tony. Uh, it looks like Aaron is next.
Yeah, this is only if there's no other comments.
I think you're the last one that I see, unless I've missed.
Great. Um, so thanks, everyone, for your comments. Um, so very quickly, um, Mr. Schwartz, I think you can get the uh, survey data from the city, and there we are, uh, the proposal, the ordinance will still have, will still need to go through Hank, right? It's still going to have to pass code. Uh, so the fears of electrocution through batteries, I think, is already taken is already something that's already, I've been worked out. Um, the, the other question that, that Tony raises is important. Um, I do encourage all of you to drive through Pleasant Ridge. Um, that did allow the ordinance essentially that you are, that have before you a couple of years ago. And there are a couple of homes that have solar in the front. Um, only sixty-some percent of the residents approved it, and they look great. Um, the difference between Huntington Woods and um, Warren is that we have a lot more ordinances and um, on average, our homes are worth a lot more. And um, you know, I think when people are going to put up solar, they're going to have their value uh, in place. Um, the other thing is that this is symbolic more than anything else. Um, we are one of the last communities to not allow solar on the front. And right now, um, there is not a house in our community with solar. The only building with solar is um, the rec center. You're going to see more uh, metal roofs in the community than solar, uh, solar panels. So actually, if you drive through the city and see how many metal roofs are in the community uh, and see if you actually notice them. I think that's kind of the, the way that you need to think about solar. I think that's kind of the, the way that you need to think about solar panels. The other things, the other questions about size, et cetera, I'll leave it to the, to the commission. But I think this is something that we don't need to fear. This is something that we should embrace. But anyway, you've heard me say this for a couple of months, so I will leave it at that.
I just have a quick compliments, both compliment, thank you, Aaron and.
And could you identify yourself?
Yes, of course, Ben Phelan, like one three, one, two, nine, Boardman Avenue. I'm also on the Environmental Advisory Committee. I believe has a new name. So I, I'm stating for the public record, both happy birthday to my wife and thank you for keeping us up in the agenda. And happy belated birthday to this conversation, which I just checked in the first time solar ordinance revision appeared on an environmental advisory committee agenda was May twenty-third, twenty nineteen. So I think if, if anyone's concerned, there can be substantive concerns. If there are still like process and deliberation concerns, I would have trouble taking, taking them as, as earnest at this point. I think that we can. And I'm grateful that everyone has been very deliberative. And many people voted in both the first and second survey. Anecdotally, there are a lot of people who voted in the first survey who didn't vote on a second because they didn't think that they needed to or they didn't understand. And that's fine. I mean, I think the, the response approval rating speaks for itself. So I would say that both the free market and the body politic are substantially and increasingly in favor of this. And we don't need to get hung up on being early adopters or late adopters. I think based on the current state of the technology, this is a really optimal point to adopt it and have the benefit of some of the clunkier panels that we don't have because we, we weren't putting them up then, other places do, and that the current ones are very aesthetically pleasing, right? More so than gutters were when people started putting gutters on our houses. So thank you all and I suppose there's still a question of whether we want to vote on it needing a consensus is a cause for some concern. But I will, I'll leave that up to the, to the broader conversation. There's the dog right now. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ben.
Just, just one point of clarification, because the point was brought up about like backfeeding the grid and inspections and that type of thing. Just so that the public is aware, anytime that we have an ordinance like this proposed, it still requires permits. When you get a permit, you also require inspections. So I did want to make it clear that this is not done where you just send in your stuff, sign off, and nobody looks at it and that's the end of it. You would still have to have inspections and those would be done by our electrical inspector and our building official. So there are more people that would look at it than just signing an application to go ahead and do it.
Thank you, Hank. I am not seeing anybody else wishing to speak. Go ahead and unmute if I'm missing anybody.
I got one quick comment and I'll be done. If that's possible. Aaron, I agree with what you have said and certainly we need to take the lead. And we haven't done so in a number of these areas. Pleasant Ridge was a little ahead of us. I think that they've done a pretty good job with that. I think you are essentially correct in your assertion there. But I do want to make sure that with decades of looking at things called blight. Now, I know that this is not blight. I, I, I'm not saying it is. But we have been very careful about seeing to it that the nature of the community has stayed the same or generally the same for decades and decades. Our city commissioners have worked hard at that. And I don't want to see that go away. And so at least we have to have enough teeth in the ordinance to see to it that the margins of these panels. Aaron, to, to answer kind of what you said, don't extend over the roof lines or don't extend. There's got to be something if it, they've changed so much that they may be tenable. But there has got to be teeth in the ordinance that allows for us to see to it that, that is done, that they don't extend over the margins of the home. It's a height, height variables and so on and so forth. So I would certainly urge the commission, both this commission and the city commission to look at teeth that would allow this to happen in a positive way, but not to obscure our beautiful neighborhoods. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thanks, Tony. And I think with that, we will close public participation. Before I go to the planning commission, I will ask Ben and or Aaron if they want to move forward with the planning commission vote tonight.
Mike, just for point of clarification, before you do that, what you might want to do is you might want to take some of the commissioners' comments from the planning commission and hear what they have to say. Realistically, you are missing three people this evening. So that's roughly, you know, that's a third of the votes. So it would be a suggestion that perhaps you want to take the comment from the commission and that, then maybe move it to next, next month and take your vote then. That would be the suggestion.
Okay, we can, we, I wouldn't keep pressing on with comments, I suppose. I will go around the room as I see the planning commission folks, starting with Rick.
No additional comments.
Thanks, Rick. Looks like next up, I've got Blake.
So I'm gonna just weigh in in a way that I've sort of weighed in the past. First of all, I think EAC has done a really good job trying to do everything that they have been asked to do consistently. So, you know, I kind of applaud that. I think that, yeah, I think we've talked about progress and we've talked about what may or may not unsightly. Whether it's a water meter, a gas meter, an air conditioner, a water feature might be unsightly to some people and so would a play structure in somebody's backyard. So I just encourage you to sort of take all of that into consideration and, and, and with the knowledge that aesthetics do change over time. And I think technology and innovation often motivates some of those changes. So I, you know, I am a believer in solar. I think there's a certain inevitability to it. I do think we need to mandate the method as a community to Hank's point. Permits and inspections and, you know, having some, some ground rules are what is going to deem what is and is not appropriate. I just think if Huntington Woods is genuinely committed to a green infrastructure, as we say that we are, this is an inevitable step forward. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Blake. Chris?
Get the words out of my mouth, Blake. No, I, I do echo with Blake as stated as well. And I just think of things like power lines, you know, if you think about eighty, a hundred years ago, power lines were starting to be installed. And I'm sure that there's arguments back then about aesthetics and safety and things like that, and still to this day. And obviously, there's communities that bury their power, power lines when they're planning those as well. So but that's, that's as far as I'll go for tonight.
Thanks, Chris. Gail?
When this started, I was for green energy, but I had some stipulations regarding the front panels. And at that time, I felt that it needed to be go to the zoning board of appeals. And after serving on that committee and also thinking about it, I'm thinking, well, why should they have to do it? And it was more for notice. And where Jay says people may not want to buy a house based upon, or there isn't evidence based upon what somebody views or not, as a Realtor, I do know that people do make their decision on what their view is out their window. But this is something of today in the future, and I think that we have to be progressive for it. I am in favor of an ordinance that requires a permit. And I have stipulated before that I didn't feel that it should be a homeowner's permit, but it should be a licensed contractor since it's electrical. And especially after listening to some of the things that Jay said. And I think that it should only be in the front of the house. You know, if it is on a north side street or an east side street, because those are the two locations that you needed for it to be either south or west for it to be most effective. And with those reasons, I would be in favor of an ordinance.
Thanks, Gail. Jules?
I'm we was here the first time I heard all this. I, I will just reiterate that I think that the aesthetic issue will loom large here, but everybody else has pretty much covered the bases on this. And I mean, it is an honest discussion and it's, and it's a balanced discussion. But I don't think that when it comes to issues like this, you should minimize the, you know, where you're saying how many people are in favor of it and things like that. It's wait, wait until it comes up for a vote in the city commission. Then we'll find out how many people are in favor of it. So, but other than that, I don't have anything to add.
Thanks, Jules. I don't have a whole, whole lot to add either. You know, I, I, I do agree with Blake that this is, you know, one, it's a good thing. Two, it's, it's probably inevitable, whether it's this pass or a future pass. You know, my two big concerns, one are the aesthetics. Anybody that who's has ever driven to West Foreign Market and cut through the neighborhood has seen, I hope, the house that I'm talking about with some of the worst looking solar panels I've ever seen, you know, they're, they're basically have little A frames on the roof. I know that's not something we're looking to do, but I think that's the, when, when people get concerned about the aesthetics, that house is probably what, what folks are thinking about. You know, I, I want to have guardrails into what this thing looks like. It's got to be done right. My other concern is, is we're going to go through all this and who's really going to do it? You know, talking to Hank, I think we've had very, very, very few, almost no, no applications to date for this. I understand the price is coming down a bit. That may encourage people, but I, I really question even if we let people go a little more wide open than we do now. Everybody wants it. Nobody's actually pulling the trigger. You know, that's kind of one of my concerns, but I guess all that said, we can vote today with the five of us or we can push it out.
Mr. Chair, just again, I just want to point out that, you know, it takes five votes to pass. You have six members here and three members absent. So it's one of the things that you, that you have to consider in this is that you have a third of the planning commission that's unable to at this point in time you know, participate in the discussions.
And, and just to clarify, Hank, this is, this would be a vote to set a public hearing?
Which, no, this is the public hearing. This is the vote to recommend this to the city commission for approval.
Okay, thanks. So I guess Aaron, Ben, anything to, thoughts there?
I, I'm not sure if it's really I mean, I really, I see us as partners in, you know, doing this, you know, transparently and inclusively. I'm only speaking for Aaron, but it seems you know, it's one thing when like a homeowner is trying to read the, you know, the, the poker faces of of people about whether they're going to get their variance, but this seems different from that. So I, I don't, I think actually I would I would really like defer to the planning commission for how you think you can best proceed in a way that reflects the, you know, the, the people who participated in the, in the survey or these surveys plural. So I, I, that's sort of where I'm currently situated.
Okay, thanks, Ben. Aaron, anything to add?
No, I'll, you know, whatever you think is best. You know, I guess the idea is that if it, assuming it would pass, it would go off on the June or July commission and I don't know how full their plate is then. Whatever you all feel comfortable with, if you want the full participation, that's fine. As Ben said, we've been waiting two years on this and we can wait another month. You know, I would like to get this through efficiently, though.
Okay, Hank, I'm leaning towards saying let's vote unless you feel otherwise.
It's, it's not up to me. It's up to you as far as what you want to do. So I mean, if you vote on it, you vote on it. If you vote to table it or, you know, pass it through to the next meeting, then that's what you do either way. You've taken public comment on it. So that partially, that part of your obligation is passed. It's up to you at this point whether or not you would want to do it. It's, it's, the idea is, is that here, if, if you have two people that don't vote yes, then it's dead in the water. So if you want it, you know what I mean? You have to have five votes, five affirmative votes in order to pass it. So that's.
Hank, I'm just going to tell you right now, because this is coming to the city commission. I think, I think it's incumbent upon me to abstain on this vote because ultimately it's something that I'm going to have to vote on there. I don't know if I have to, but I think if I vote yes or vote no on this, that's immediately going to send, you know, some sort of a message about which way this is going. So to the extent that that could bear on how this goes, I want to make that clear first. I don't want to wait till there's a vote and then say abstaining and have everybody, you know, look at me and say, well, you should have said that first. So I'm saying it first.
Thank you.
I don't know if I'm right or wrong. I just think.
No, you're, you're fine. And that's, the transparency is much appreciated. Mr. Chair, at this point in time, you need five out of five. So I mean, you could either do a motion to table and pass it to the next meeting or you could vote on it. But I, that would assume that everybody's going to vote for it. It may be in the best interest of the environmental sustainability committee to have it passed to next month. That's up, that's up to you guys.
Well, yeah, I was, I was kind of leaning towards moving forward tonight, but based on what Jewel said, I mean, you know, if it works anything like me and the Z B A, he would have to abstain tonight so he could comment at, at city commission, which I'm sure he would rather do. So we're not even going to have, oh, we, I'm sorry, we do, we have six.
You have exactly five. That's why I was saying that it might be in the best interest to table it. That's up to you, however.
So I will, I will open up to the rest of the commission members. If anybody wants to make a motion to either table or vote tonight, make a motion to approve them before.
Mike, I would like to make a motion to table this till the next meeting.
Thank you, Rick. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, go around the room here. Give me a second. Gail?
Gail, you're muted.
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Jules?
Hi.
Hi. So it looks like we'll table it.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will, it'll be on the agenda. We will not be doing public participation again, correct, Hank?
It will be, and you can always take public participation, but your obligation for public participation on this ordinance change has been that. Okay, so it, it could be a fairly quick meeting next time, unless, you know, there's some people that feel strongly or didn't get an opportunity and we should take public comment at that point. But at this point in time, you've concluded your public hearing for this evening on this matter.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, guys. All right, so next it looks like we're up for the site plan reviews. First one up is two, five, five, one, two, Parkwood. I'm going to butcher this. Panzik and Hall?
Yes.
Yes, I butchered it. Who are you guys going to speak or do you have an architect or builder?
We, we do. We've got a builder here. I, I believe he's here. Chuck, are you with us? Is that the right Chuck?
It was.
It was muted. He's muted.
He's muted, but if, if you wanted to start off, you could.
Yeah, if you guys want to give us a little bit of background, what you're looking to do.
Sure, we, we're currently in Colonial here, beautiful, love the house. Great master bedroom, no master bath. So what we're doing, we have an addition currently that was built in nineteen seventy-one, I believe. First floor addition that. First floor addition that my wife uses for her office. And we're hoping to build this renovation and make a master bathroom on top of that addition.
Great, thank you. Chuck, did you want to add anything?
The footprint of the addition is. Actually smaller than the footprint of the first floor addition, so. It's on the back of the house. It's really not visible from the street. The finishes would be all. Cement board siding, just like the first floor addition that was put on there. So. Essence, it wouldn't really change the appearance of the house.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hank, anything that you want to take us through before we start seeing comments?
Yeah, just for. Just for the basics on this, this one meets the height, front yard, side yard, rear yard. Lot coverage and house size, so it's under in everything. So there's nothing here that would really require a lot of debate. The lot itself is nine thousand eight hundred fifty six square feet. The size that they would finish with is still under both neighboring houses. And it is consistent with the neighborhood. With what they're trying to do and realistically at a hundred and eighty eight square feet is a pretty small ask for an addition for the house. The material is siding on it. There's windows on all sides. The north elevation has one small window. Which might be the only question mark, but the other two sides. Have a fair, have a reasonable amount of penetration and they don't need that particular. Item in order to get the square footage that they require.
Okay, great. Thank you. We will go ahead and open it up for public participation. Anybody from the public wishing to speak, now's your chance. Seeing none, we'll start with the planning commission. Let's see here. I'm sorry, was that somebody looking to speak or not?
I would like to speak.
Okay, could you just state your name and your address, please?
Elizabeth Fielder, two, five, five, one, five, Scotia. I live directly behind that house. And I think it sounds like a lovely addition, and I'm just saying that. I would welcome them putting on a master bath and. That's all I have to say.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure.
We will close public participation and start with the planning commission. Rick, you're up.
No comment.
Thanks, Rick. Jules?
No questions. Well explained.
Thank you. Blake?
I have no questions or comments. I think it meets all of the technical aesthetic criteria as far as I can see.
Thanks, Blake. Chris?
No questions for me.
Thank you, Chris. Gail?
I don't have questions. I think it's a nice addition. I think everybody deserves to have a master bath and a decent sized closet since you only have two little one. Two little closets in the room. So and you still get to keep your deck upstairs. It just gets to be smaller.
Thanks, Gail. I agree. Looks about as straightforward as you can get. So I guess with that said, we'd be looking for a motion to do something here.
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you. Rick?
Hi.
Jules?
Hi.
Blake?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Hi. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you so much. We're also sharing a bathroom right now with two teenagers, so this is a relief.
Good luck with the project and the rest of the sharing and the bathroom.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have site plan review for two, six, three, three, six Wyoming. Ternipole residence. Who is going to speak for this?
Mr. Mr. Chair, before you do that, I need to be transparent. In two thousand and three, I was lucky enough to sell the house to the Ternipoles. But that's been the relationship since then, you know, other than friends and neighbors in the in the community. But I just need everybody else on the committee to know that I did have a professional relationship with them when I sold them this house. And it met their needs at that time, but I can see it's too small for them now.
Thanks for the disclosure, Gail. Hank, to me, you let me know what to me, that doesn't require a.
I wouldn't think so. While we appreciate the disclosure, that was eighteen years ago. So I'm not thinking, but if the board has any questions or problems about Gail participating in this, you can hold a vote as to whether or not you should recuse yourself. I know that we do have one other recusal coming on this particular project.
Yeah, this is Blake Moore. I'm actively involved in the project, so I need to recuse myself on this one. So I will mute and turn off my video and listen closely.
Thanks, Blake.
So then Gail would be the fifth vote. So it's up to you whether or not you want to allow Gail to participate on this.
I see no, I see no issue.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with Gail. I guess the only, just a heads up to the homeowners is they will need a hundred percent yes. If they're comfortable moving forward, so am I.
Yep, this is Kim Ternipole. I'm here with Brad and we are.
Okay, great. Did you want to kick us off?
Sure. So Gail, thank you for the house. We love it here. We've got great neighbors and we're staying. So we're following the previous folks' lead. We need a master bathroom desperately. So we're putting a two-story addition on the back. We're expanding our smaller room in the back to a great room. And then putting an addition on with a fourth bedroom and a master bath and a nice closet. And we've got Mark Rosenblatt, who's on, who can speak to more details around the project if you have any questions.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mark, do you want to?
So Mark Rosenblatt with Huntington Home. I also happen to be their neighbor, so I can. Speak to that as well. I think it's a beautiful addition. It's going to fit great. Now back as the builder. So basically, what we're trying to do is take an old. Addition, it wasn't really an addition. It was a, it was an old porch that they closed in. This was, I believe, long before Brad and Kim had the house. The materials of this porch or this now are very old. They they need to be updated. The way, if you look at the prints, the way the house is set up now in the back of the house, there's a space between. It's a just shy of twelve feet, a space between the old porch and the side of the garage. All we're trying to do is connect the two. And so we're not really changing so much in the back. Of course, there's a significant addition. Which, by the way, you cannot see from the front of the house because everything stays below. By connecting it, we allow the the Ternipoles to have. A bigger space back there. We've got the existing verded porch. Motion, and then they get the nice room in the back. And then the reason for extending the garage. Towards the back is twofold. One, to create a space to have a little bit of privacy for a new patio. But also, they only have a single car garage and as much as everybody. Deserves to have a master bath, they also deserve to have a place to put their stuff as well as at least one car. We're using all materials similar same as what they have brick on the main floor. We're putting. I believe plenty of windows all over the place and we're using hardy siding, I believe. So hopefully, the commission likes what they see and the Ternipoles get their master bath and their bigger garage. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mark.
One additional note is we have talked to all of our neighbors. I think one of our neighbors sent in a letter for the record. And then we've talked to and we'll continue working with our neighbors to make sure it meets their needs as well.
Great, thank you. All right, we'll open it up for public participation.
Do you want to let me go or after?
Sorry.
Whatever your pleasure is.
You know, I apologize. I should have, I should have brought you in first. Go ahead.
That's okay. I just want to point out that they're they're under on their height. They're under, they're under on the front yard setbacks. They have side yards existing, no change. So that hasn't hasn't changed in any way, shape or form that would impact this. The rear yard is still over what's required. Their lot coverage is under what's required and their maximum house size is still under what's required. The particular instance with the lots are is that these lots are a little bit unique and that they're fifty by one twenty. So they're a little bit smaller than what's normal in the R one D zone district. But the type of house that they're proposing here is substantially less than what their size is required. So. Having said that, they meet the fenestration guides and they meet all the other guidelines, even though they don't necessarily need to in order to get this.
Great, thanks, Hank. We open up here for public participation. And seeing none, we'll close public participation and go to the commission. Rick?
Can someone confirm what the existing siding is on the front of the house? It looks to be aluminum from the street view.
It is aluminum existing, yes.
And what are you proposing to put in for the addition?
I believe that is Kim Brad. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that that is all. Your hardy siding.
Correct. That is true.
Yes, hardy solid, painted hardy board siding.
So is the intent to match the existing size? And look of the aluminum, but in hardy?
It's called out, I believe the size of it will probably use the seven inch reveal. Hardy siding. I'm not sure what the reveal is on the existing aluminum. But the seven inch reveal hardy is pretty standard material.
So the plans call for siding to match existing, but we're not truly matching existing siding, correct?
I'm going to guess that's more of a boilerplate. That didn't get changed on the print because we're not matching existing siding. We're replacing existing siding.
For the whole house?
Kim Brad, am I correct for the whole house?
Thankfully, yes. I want to get rid of that siding.
Okay, that fixes that fixes all my concerns.
I don't like it more than you don't like it. Thanks, Rick.
All right, that's it, Mike.
Thanks. And sorry, just to clarify, I saw a note on here, I thought for the back of the house that it said vinyl siding to match. So so we're talking all siding in the house, three hundred and sixty degrees will be hardy board. After the project, right?
That was what I thought we were doing, yes.
Okay.
It sounds like that's what Kim wants to do and thinks we're doing as well.
Okay.
There's, there's a material schedule on A three point two that calls out James Hardy siding.
Okay, great. Thank you. Jules?
No questions.
Thanks, Jules. Gail?
I will second again that everybody needs a master bath and a master closet, and I'm glad that you can find space to put in. A first floor mudroom, you know, laundry area for you because it was so tight coming in from. The one car garage off the driveway right there because you're right at that space. It only goes to show that your survey from two thousand and three. Which is a mortgage survey is not real measured and they say they could be plus or minus inches and. You're not changing any of the footprint of the building, only that it does, it's existing. Preexisting that it doesn't meet the side yard setbacks, but it's staying the same. And I'm in favor of it. I think it's a great plan. Lots of windows and a nice look. I remember those windows in the sunroom. Be nice to have a real room out back.
Thanks, Gail. Chris?
No questions for me.
Okay, great. Yeah, my only concern was the material spec. Other than that, design looks great. I'm happy. So we'd be looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, before you do, let me just for the record, we do have a communication from Mr. Frank Spencer, who's on Humber. Was submitted a letter which is in your packet in support of the project.
I did see that. Thank you. Glowing support, I would say.
Eloquent.
All right, anybody wish to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Rick?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
And I'm I. That's us. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you so much.
Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Next up, eight, three, seven, six Huntington, the Moscow residence. Who is going to speak for this?
I can start. Hi, I'm Ellie Moscow. We moved into the residence in late two thousand eighteen, practically two thousand nineteen. At the time, house was perfect for us. It's a three bedroom, two full, two half baths. We have two young children. We found out a couple of months ago that we are expecting a third child. And so we are looking to put a fourth bedroom over an existing portion of our house. My husband would be over here right now, but he's doing bedtime. He got the short straw. Basically, what we're looking to do is build a hallway through my son's room and put a bedroom over. Uses a playroom, I think originally was set as a porch. It's one of those decks that are in the neighborhood that has a door to nowhere. And so we're looking to pretty much enclose that with a candeliver and make a bedroom for another child. I have a, I Jeff, Jeff Nickel is here to talk a little bit more about the details. He's our designer. But I just wanted to mention that we have a couple of neighbors on the call. I know that support the. The plan along with our neighbor to the. West of us, Jason Turkish, I don't think is on the call, but he wanted me to extend that he also gives his full support.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did the architect or builder want to speak?
No comments at this time.
Okay. Hank? You're muted, sir.
How do you like that? Okay. Okay, so basically what we have here is we have just a basic addition. Zoning is R one C, sixty nine hundred and five square feet in the lot. It meets the height requirements. It meets the front yard requirements. It meets the side yard requirements. It also meets the rear yard requirements. Lot coverage is close, but it does meet it. And the house size is under significantly, but appears that they're looking for basically just what they need. You're looking at. Colonial two-story brick and siding combination, and it does have to come to you because it is obviously sided, but the. Addition below it is also sided, so it's interesting that. You run into this again, time after time. But this is what's proposed. If you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them for you, as I'm sure Mr. Nicholas.
Thanks, Hank. That's it. We'll open it up for public participation. Anybody wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll close public participation and start with the commission. Rick?
No comments.
Thank you. Jules?
No comment. Nice, nice proposal. Good plans. I see no issues.
Thanks, Jules. Blake?
I would agree. They look great. I don't have any issues.
Thanks, Blake. Chris?
No questions here.
Thank you, Chris. Gail?
It looks great and that one bedroom is going to get three sets of sliding windows which match the other sliding windows in the house. So I think it looks great and you did everything to to do something special there. It's a very small addition of only a hundred and eighty seven square feet.
Thanks, Gail. I would agree. I think it looks great. The only thing I would suggest. Is while you're sort of, while you're in their theory, I see you're matching the vinyl siding to what's there. Would love to see all of it be hardy board, but we can't make you, but you'll wish you did.
Some kind of vinyl siding to hardy board.
What are they proposing? Vinyl siding or hardy?
Mike, I muted them because they were having a conversation that wasn't.
I was looking forward to seeing where it was going to go.
Okay, well, I'll unmute them then.
All right, that all said, we will go ahead and look for a motion.
So moved.
Thanks, Jules.
Second.
Chris, Rick?
Hi.
Blake?
Hi.
Gail?
Hi.
Hi. Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
And a baby.
Thank you.
Let's see. Next up, we have two, five, eight, oh, one Dundee Steinberg Residence. And who is here to speak for that?
I'm here as well as my architect and I think Anthony was going to present the plans.
Uh, I'm here as well as my architect and I think Anthony was going to present um the plans.
Okay, great.
Hi, it's Andrew Ross Eve. Uh, Ross Eve Burn Associates Royal Oak, also Huntington Woods. Um, we're looking uh to get approval for uh the reconstruction of the existing garage. Like many older homes, the smaller garage, we want a bigger garage to fit all our, all our stuff and all our bigger cars. The, the garage will meet all setbacks and, excuse me, lot coverage. Um, where I we didn't need any, anything for that. We did get a uh variance for a house size. In addition to the proposed garage, we're, we're looking to add a second floor on the second floor, a walk-in closet and sitting room. We already have a master bath in this house, but we're looking for a, a walk-in closet to uh make uh uh make up for the uh minimal closets that's in uh, in this older home. And the first floor of the, will be painted brick to match the existing house. The second floor will be painted cement siding, cementitious siding, uh, and the, and the ruffle match the existing. Um, after we submitted the plans, we um, can I get uh, can I present?
Yep. Hold on, let me get to you.
Oh, discussion with the client, we decided we'd like to uh, oops.
Do you want A1?
Uh, I was going to present something on my own.
That's fine.
Like, I'm happy to make.
No, hold on.
John and I discussed the plan after we submitted and uh he wants a different uh window uh configuration in the front.
Okay, so let me just ask you a question then. Are you proposing something different than what you've submitted?
Just the windows. I mean, the footprint ever stays the same, square footage.
So the plans that I have are not what is being, is the plans that I have are different than what you're going to ship right now?
Yeah, somewhat different, yes.
Okay, that's going to be up to the planning commissioners to whether or not they want to proceed with that.
What does somewhat mean?
Well, I guess I can see.
Find out.
I, I guess it'd be interesting how different. I mean, this, this is highly unusual to have submitted plans that are not what you're to build.
Well, can you see what I'm sharing?
Uh, yes.
Okay, the, the difference is uh in both cases, we had a hip roof. In this case, we have the three windows across rather than the uh two smaller windows. Other than that, the same materials, the same siding. And whether, and the question is also is whether this is even different enough that uh if the uh original presentation was uh some approved, whether we could build this.
What, um? Clarify, clarify for us. Uh, is what we're looking at here in this slide, what you're going to do, or is this the?
Well, what we would like to do.
Well, it looks to me like your front window configuration above the garage is completely different.
Correct.
What's going on on the side? Different than the plans we have.
Um, I mean, I think the, the window may have moved a little bit, but other than that, nothing.
I believe, Mr. Chair, that we're showing a window. If we're looking at, if what you're seeing is a cross-section there and it's the west elevation. I just want to clarify what they're doing there.
What's the reason for the change?
Just um it was a little confusion between the two of us and doing remote calls.
Okay, so the, the placement of the upper window on the south elevation has shifted slightly and the configuration of the front windows over the garage door have changed. Other than that, nothing else, correct?
Correct.
Andrew?
Yes.
Did you not put a window into the garage that isn't on the original plan? I don't see a window on the garage in the original plan.
On the first floor?
Correct.
Um, okay. This.
That window is not on the original plan. The window upstairs is on the original plan, but farther back. And, and lower down rather than higher up, but maybe not. But that window is not on the plan, on the garage.
We're adding, we're adding a window on the, on the first floor too.
Okay.
Okay, um, I don't know if it's totally my call, but I would certainly take uh input from the rest of the planning commission. I, I guess now that I see the renderings, if those are the only two changes, I'm comfortable moving forward tonight. Uh, if anybody is not comfortable, uh, speak now. Okay.
I'm com- I'm comfortable with it. Could I ask one more clarification comparing the garage? The door that's coming out, that's uh, that's next to the long windows that are in the back in the family room area. We can't see it in this drawing, but we do see it in our blueprints. That's staying the same. There's a French door that's coming out of somewhere, and I take it it's not coming out of the garage. It's coming out of the family room and that's staying.
That does not change.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, are you going to go around for comments again or?
Uh, yeah, I will. I'll, I'll let Andrew finish up. We'll let Hank kick in and then we'll go around.
I, I do have one question. Looking at the new plans, did the square footage change with a little bit of a bump out for those windows?
It will not change. It did not change.
Okay, Mike, thank you.
Alright, uh, Andrew, anything else before we turn it over to Hank?
No.
Okay, uh, Hank, ready for you?
Okay, okay, good. I just want to make sure we took that down. Okay, so this project is a little bit unusual in that it did come to you with a CBA variance. It was granted on May tenth. The size is no longer an issue. Again, you do have to apply your standards for a visual appearance. You know, you could look at windows, quality windows, trim materials, et cetera. Those are all subject of review. Another thing that I would caution you on is that because there is a difference between what you are seeing and the documents that have been submitted to you and what is being presented tonight, any motion that you make will have to incorporate any change that was made this evening, that that's the first time you're seeing it as opposed to the documents that you have. And the city would not issue a permit until the documents are resubmitted to the city with those changes incorporated, which would be checked against the minutes of this meeting in order to make sure that they comply.
Thanks, Hank. Anything else to add before we open it up? Nope, okay. Uh, that said, we'll go ahead and open it up for public participation. Seeing no one wishing to speak, uh, we will start with Rick.
No additional comments.
Thanks, Rick. Uh, Jules?
Comments?
Thank you. Blake?
Uh, I don't mind the changes. It obviously is a little bit unorthodox to see them at Odark forty, but I think if uh the changes are resubmitted for compliance, it looks great.
Thanks, Blake. Uh, Chris?
No questions for me.
Thank you. Gail?
I like the changes as long as they come in the same way. I like the window in the sitting room. And this is the house that only had eighteen square feet of closet in the master bedroom, and everybody deserves a walk-in closet.
Thanks, Gail. Uh, I'll echo everybody else. I actually prefer the updated plan. Uh, just wish we had it before just now. Uh, so that said, uh, looking for motion.
Did you take public participation?
I did.
You did, okay.
It was that fast.
It was.
So moved.
So we have to make a motion including?
The motion has, yes, the motion has to include exactly what the changes are.
I'll try it. I move to approve the addition with the following changes to the plans that were submitted. A new window in the front in the sitting area. The movement of the window that is in the walk-in closet on the second floor and the addition of a window in the garage. I think those were the only three changes, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, Andrew?
Yes.
Second.
Alright, who's the second?
Jules.
Jules, thanks. Uh, okay, Rick?
Hi.
Thank you. Uh, Blake?
Hi.
Uh, Chris?
Hi.
Uh, hi. Good luck with the project.
Thank you. Thank you for being accommodating.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, okay. Already did the uh ordinance here, uh, matter of master plan discussion. Uh, Hank will let you do that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just to point out again, um, we still do have some of our surveys that are out that we get back, um, because every one of your input is important to the planning uh consultant as well as myself. Uh, again, I've shown you the documents that they have with the uh master plan update for what was done and gone over at the May seventeenth meeting. I do want to remind everybody about the June third workshop at the Rec Center, four to seven P M. Um, at that point in time, we're going to have the visioning session. There'll be displays. There will be planning consultants there to talk to uh the residents and take feedback from the public on this matter. We encourage everybody to be there. As we do also encourage the planning commission to be there. So if there's some questions or you might want to listen to what people say and that, it's kind of important that we, we, we get to do this so infrequently that everybody's input on this is important and your thoughts are going to be very important. Having said that, uh, again, just reminding everybody about June third. Um, there are signs out all over the city. So uh, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If not, uh, this is just more of an informative update.
I have a question, Hank. The city document that we received regarding the master plan from the consulting company is this online for anybody to see or this is just for our view? They're going to be getting the information.
It was distributed for yours because it was used for you to define what was going to go into the June third meeting. So between that and the survey, so uh putting that out when you haven't decided to put it a hundred percent forward in that manner uh isn't something that we want to do. What we want to do is we want to go ahead and take the public's input on the third and then we'll start to frame the document, which will come back to you. I also do not anticipate needing a meeting, uh, a second meeting in June or July. Which would make you happy.
Well, I'm missing the June meeting on the twenty-eighth because I'll be out of red eye.
Any other discussion or anything needed for this one, Hank?
No, it was just informative.
Okay, great. Any questions? Anybody? Uh, okay, uh, CIP plan receipt.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is uh one of the things that uh every year uh there's a capital improvement plan. It's administered by the finance department and the city commission. Uh, because originally the uh CIP is a charge of the planning commission, they do forward a copy to you. The only action that's required for you is to receive a motion to receive and file. But this is handled by the city commission, uh, but it lets you know what's going on and what's been decided. So all the budget portions for this for the CIP are line item doubt and uh gives you a little bit of an idea of what goes into the process so that you can have, if you have any questions about it, I'll try to answer them as best I can, but this is a motion to receive and file.
Thanks, Hank. Uh, looking for that motion.
Have a question first. I don't know if anybody else in their packet got two page one-twenty-eights out of one-seventy-six and one page one-twenty-nine out of one-seventy-six. Was there supposed to be a different page besides one-twenty-eight and one-twenty-nine?
You got what the planning commi- what the uh finance director gave me.
Okay, so we really are only supposed to have two pages.
You're, you're, yeah, you're five. This is what you're, this is what your most, the most to file is.
Okay, I just want to make sure I wasn't missing a page.
Thanks, Gail.
I got two at the same page.
We'll file both of them.
Okay.
You could throw one away, Gail.
Uh, anybody want to make a motion?
So moved.
Thanks, Jules.
Talking.
Thanks, Chris. Rick?
Hi.
Blake?
Hi.
Hi. File it up, Hank.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, opening up for public participation. And seeing none, we'll close it and looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Thanks, Gail. Rick?
Hi.
Uh, Blake?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Alright, see you guys next month.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Everybody.